For the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father.
Who art in heaven? Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
On earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our day of the bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever.
Blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Hey, item D on the agenda today is swearing in firefighter, paramedic, Josh Anderson.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Paramedics and firefighters and police officers, make sure you're standing what you're volunteering for. Because what you're doing is, is, it's kind of anti what we're taught to do, right?
Right.
We're taught to run from danger, and you're volunteering to run towards danger. There's an animal instinct that says run away from fire. Right? It's the best way, best way to keep yourself safe in the jungle middle of the night, start a fire. And you say, no, no, I'm going towards it.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Right? Once you swear you win, you got to make sure you're doing everything, you're on public display as soon as you go outside your front door. Right?
Absolutely.
Right now, before you swear in, you do something stupid, you end up with the black days of the paper. Right? Did something stupid. After this, you do something stupid, this front page, above the crease. Right? You understand? You also understand that you're joining a good organization with really good people. And they've been there, they've done that.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
We also understand you are the first person to do it years with training and then get sworn in. So you've earned this. This has been given to you, you've earned this over the past few, right? You're ready? Do you want to have your loved one come in here and take pictures? Brian, where are you at? Come in here, please, take pictures. Who's this, who's this right here?
Go right in the middle.
That's him.
She's a medical examiner.
Okay. Who's this person back there?
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Are you drawing a picture to me? I state your name.
I, Josh Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Thou support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Ohio?
The State of Ohio.
And the Charter, ordinances, and resolutions?
And the Charter, ordinances, resolutions.
For the city of Napoleon, Ohio?
The city of Napoleon, Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio?
And the laws of the state of Ohio.
And faithfully discharge and perform?
Faithfully discharge and perform.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
All duties incumbent upon me?
All duties that have come upon me.
As a firefighter, paramedic?
A firefighter, paramedic.
For the city of Napoleon, Ohio?
The city of Napoleon, Ohio.
To which I've been appointed?
To which I've been appointed.
According to the best of my ability and understanding?
To according to the best ability and my understanding.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Congratulations.
All right, you go over here. Chief, you sit down, Brian, Captain Ballman, you got to do a family picture here. All right? You good?
Yeah.
Okay. There goes much yourself.
Uh, Josh Anderson and, uh...
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
My dad was a volunteer fire chief. I was a little kid growing up in a, in a fire station. Thought it was always cool to see fire trucks help out. Always had to admire the job, the, everything about it. And I've worked my way up through all the different certifications, all the certificates, and glad to be here.
Where'd you go up?
Paint Ohio.
Thank you, very good. Very good. Part of the, uh, oh, I just lost me. School district is, uh, trades. That's what I think.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
You've been painting a lot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Need a sign right here? Go forward, please. All right. Do the handshake while we're down here.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Starting to get a complex.
You didn't offer them to stay.
I know, I was going to.
It's not a chance.
I was just going to say, it's only when you're here.
Thanks a lot, Molly.
Totally kidding.
No, she's not.
I know. Man. Kick a guy while he's down. All right, we'll move on to, uh, item E, approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes from June 20th, 2022,
a regular council meeting will stand approved.
Hearing none, they stand approved? All right, um, item F, citizen communication. If there's anyone out in the audience there, anybody? Or on WebEx?
Nobody's on.
If you're on WebEx, nobody's on there either. Don't talk to myself anymore.
We're listening.
All right, moving on to item G, reports from council committees. G1, Finance and Budget Committee met on June 27th, 2022, and recommended council to approve the second quarter budget adjustments, and recommend council to approve the 2023 revenue budget. Item G2, Safety and Human Resource Committee met on June 27th. Dan?
Uh, yeah, at that time, we recommended consult to, uh, we recommend council to approve the fire department's part-time pay scale, and also recommended council to approve the 2023 revenue budget.
Thank you, Dan. Item G3, Technology and Communication Committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. Moving on to item I, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 037-22, and ordinance amending the city of Napoleon, Ohio Engineering Department rules and regulations, also amending previous scrivener's errors and formatting issues.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Okay.
Good, uh, motion? So. Second.
All right, here they are in your packet. Thank you, Council President. So, the, um, uh, committee met, uh, and recommended changes. We talked about it a little bit last week. But in general, the engineering rule changes are for, uh, to address the driveway issue and allow a little more leeway for the city engineer to make determinations, if it makes sense, for someone to deviate from the rules, um, if they so desire, and then, and then there's justification for it. And also to allow for changes in our, um, rules pertaining to drainage calculations for existing properties that have, um, you know, for lack of better word, are grandfathered in under our own, or, or old rules for, uh, drainage. And right now, they state that any property, for instance, um, you know, any, any property that's hardscape, so I use Walmart as the example. If they make a modification of their building, then they have to address drainage for the entire property, not just the area that's being affected. And that's, that's proven to be problematic for, uh, some businesses, locally owned businesses, that, uh, have wanted to make modifications to their properties, uh, in the recent past and are undergoing property modifications right now, so. It's a good change. It's, uh, a good change for, um, you know, it's a little more business friendly, and, and allows still for the same effect, in my opinion, I think the committee's opinion, that has the same effect of, uh, the, the intent and spirit of what the drainage rules, um, are, are trying to accomplish, so. That comes, requesting first read.
Want to have any questions, comments regarding this?
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I know when we talked about this in the Economic Development Committee, um, when we were discussing that, to me, it sounds like it's helping, um, some businesses here, if they want to grow, stay here in Napoleon. I think it's a great idea that we came up with. All right, Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan. Ken. Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Second read. Item I2 is ordinance number 038-22, an ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure supplement number two for the year 2022, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Kevin?
What we're approving here is the appropriation budgets where we've had to do increases, either because some, well, most of the time is because something wasn't budgeted, or wasn't budgeted for enough.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
It was discussed in committee, and there was no questions at that time, and it has passed. We're asking for suspension, as usual, just so that we can close out the month instead of waiting for the three reads. On this one here, the appropriation budget, the largest item for the increase here is we have under Fund 503, for 165,000, and that, it was an increase due to the substation fiber connection project. And that certainly wasn't in the budget at the initial time. The rest of the items were nothing too severe, or...
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
So I'd ask for suspension, just to get this passed, so we could close the month.
Thank you.
Motion for suspension?
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
We have any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Okay, hearing none, I almost called you Ross, that's the first...
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
We have to put a mirror here or something. Item I3 is...
That, that passed?
Yeah, that passed on suspension, first read. Okay, item I3, ordinance number 039-22.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Authorizing the finance director to make appropriation transfers, transfers of appropriation two, from one appropriation line item to another appropriation line item pursuant to ORC Section 5705.40 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, as listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency. Suspension requested, and this is...
Make a motion for the ordinance?
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
This, too, also went through the Finance and Budget Committee, uh, without any major questions or concerns. There are only four items on this. The difference between this one and the last one was that, the last one was increase in the line items that we had, and this one here, in which we try to do, in lieu of increasing the budget, is we just switch items from one line item to the other. So, for example, the top one there, um, out of travel, training, and education, we move 1,960 down to miscellaneous operating expenses, because there's, uh, more of a need in that line item than the other. And so, those are the adjustments we make. So, uh, we monitor these here so that we know what's going on, but, uh, overall, it's actually better than increasing, because it doesn't inflate our budget at all. I ask for suspension again, just because then we could close the month.
Thank you.
Make a motion for suspension?
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Any additional questions or concerns? Hearing none, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
That has passed on first read, under suspension.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Item I4 is Resolution Number 041-22, a resolution authorizing the approval of truck's liquor license for Seinhold's McCarns Incorporated, located within the city of Napoleon, Ohio. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Joel, thank you, Council President. So, uh, this is the process that a business would have to go through if there are no liquor permits, uh, available for their business. And what they call it is trexing, so they trex in a, or transfer in a liquor permit to this jurisdiction, which is, uh, you know, the city of Napoleon, uh, from another area in the state. And usually, you know, most places, they'll hire an attorney out of Columbus who specializes in this, and have them go through the whole process and paperwork of, uh, uh, getting it submitted and approved, going through the process and everything else. So, um, in this case, um, the business owner is requesting suspension on this due to, they would like to actually open, uh, in September, and, uh, getting this passed would at least allow them to submit their application to the state, and, which can take up to eight weeks, so, uh...
I thought, uh, you know, uh, something like that could only be transferred within the county, but it can come anywhere from the state of Ohio?
It can, and this was something that was brand new to me, um, a couple of weeks ago when it was presented. And I forget the ordinance number, it's probably below section 43329. Legislates that we are allowed to transfer in under certain circumstances when there's an economic development project. And again, this was all brand new to me. But I did look into it, attempted to define economic development project, found nothing anywhere, in the statutes, or in the case law, or anywhere at all. Given the numbers that were presented, uh, on the application, it did seem that there was a strong argument that the incoming funds would be, would qualify as an economic development project. Here we are.
Moving on, are there questions or comments? Need a, a motion for suspension?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Any other questions or comments regarding the resolution?
Quick question. So, for liquor license, historically, it's just no action taken on our part, means approval, or symbolizing?
Yeah, also, when we're talking about, um, I believe it's, I can't, the words...
Renewals.
Renewals, yeah. When, when we're talking about renewals, if we do nothing, then everything remains the same. In this situation, um, I debated whether or not a motion would suffice, or legislation might be helpful. Decided that legislation might be helpful to the applicant. Something that they can attach to their application to the state. Still up to the state, whether or not they approve this transfer. It's not up to us, but if the city's on board, uh, the state would, I think, hopefully, approve it.
Okay, thank you. Is your intention to take it through three reads?
On this one, I, I think they're, they're asking for...
The, go ahead, suspension was...
Yeah.
Yeah, but not emergency.
But not emergency.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
There's no real argument for emergency.
Okay.
So, they'll have the legislation, and if it takes eight weeks, uh, the 30 days will have passed. And so, if anybody has something to say, I guess, regarding this...
Well, it's three reads, right? And still do three reads. It just becomes, after the third read, then it becomes...
No, it's suspension.
But it's not an emergency, though.
But not emergency, it's 30 days, not three reads.
We're still doing three reads on this.
No, suspension is...
Suspension means it's 30 days.
You've got them reversed.
Do I have reversed?
Suspension of the rules requiring three reads is, uh, I guess, the full terminology. Uh, rules require three reads for legislation.
Emergency is.
Emergency has to do with whether or not we wait 30 days.
Okay.
For some sort of petition.
So we have to see what we use on Tuesday instead of Monday.
That's right. The only comment I would have is, um, agreeing with the suspension is, anytime any of these liquor licenses have come up, since I've been on council, we've never had an issue or reason to, um, to even make a, um, I don't know, to vote on, hey, let's not renew that one. Maybe if we had multiple ones, and we were having issues, but...
And normally, in a situation like that, we're asking the police chief or somebody with knowledge of, of the situation, if there are issues on the, at that facility, or something like that. In this situation, uh, really, the only, the only consideration is whether or not this does qualify as an economic development project, and if the city actually wants it to come in, um, and, and that's up to you, obviously.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
One more question. Once it does transfer within the county, does it stay in the county?
I, I'm not going to give you a, a 100% certain answer. It should, um, unless it's transferred out, or unless it goes away. Then I'm not exactly sure how that would, I, I'd have to look at it some more to, to determine exactly what happens after, if, if they let it go, or if it laps.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
That has passed on first read, under suspension. And moving on to item I5, Resolution Number 042-22, a resolution adopting the 2023 tax budget for the city of Napoleon, Ohio, as required in Sections 5705.28 and 5705.281 of the Ohio Revised Code, and directing the finance director to file the same with the county auditor, and declaring an emergency. And suspension is applicable to this as well. Motion.
Second.
Kevin?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this was reviewed and discussed in the Finance and Budget Committee. What, what we're approving here is that...
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
And these are only the property tax revenues, so any, any other taxes, other than property taxes, does, are not included in this. But by statute, we have to, um, summarize and state that these are the, what we expect for our revenues for the property taxes. We approve them, then it goes in front of the Budget Commission, which is the auditor, the prosecutor, and the treasurer with that. All, all villages, cities, townships, schools, everybody has to have this to the auditor by July 20th. That's why I'm asking for suspension of, of, uh, three reads.
Thank you. Is this something that can be prepared earlier, or you get all the information based on the county numbers?
Well, yeah, it could be, it could be earlier in the future, it certainly can. The things that you wait upon, or you estimate the city tax valuation, which is really not set until the end of the year, so you're always going by the previous years. And if you were ever thinking about putting something else on the ballot, that would change that. So if you had s, a levy that goes on for, like, in November, that would change these numbers, for example. The other key to this, and the city of Napoleon's never done this, is that your inside millage, you can move around. You have 2.9 mills of inside millage, two goes to the general fund, 0.6 goes to police, and 0.3 go to fire. And those were set for many, many years.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Those can always be re-reviewed, but that's what you would probably want to make the decision on, whether you'd want to change those prior to this going to the Budget Commission. At this point, I do not suggest that change, just because I just know that there was discussion by previous councils and agreements by previous council to put those 0.6 and 0.3 into those funds. Certainly can change, but then that would have, that should go through committee.
Right. Thank you.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Motion for suspension?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll on the resolution.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yep.
Molly.
Yes.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Appreciate that.
All right, moving on to item J, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. J1 is ordinance, ordinance number 034-22, an ordinance creating the non-bargaining position of Assistant Operations Superintendent for the city of Napoleon, Ohio, on a temporary basis, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Joel?
I have nothing to add to this, and I've heard no comments from anybody regarding this.
Anyone else have any questions? Comments? Okay, Marissa, please call a roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Yes.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
That one will be moving on to third read. Item J2 is ordinance number 035-22, an ordinance amending a certain section of the city of Napoleon Personnel Code, specifically Section 197.06B residency requirements. Have a motion?
So.
Second.
Ladies first.
Again, I have nothing new to add to this, just requesting second read, and the chief and I are here for any questions.
Anyone have any questions regarding this? All right, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
All right, that one will be moving on to third read as well. Item K, we have no third reads this week. Item L is good of the city.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Apply for OPWC Issue 2, skip LTIP funding.
Yes, pardon me while I scroll all the way down near to the bottom of this, so, uh...
Are you going to explain all those acronyms that I just threw out there?
Yeah, yeah, OPWC, Ohio Public Works Commission. Issue 2 is a program that they offer, and this is something that we apply to every year. They just require legislation, uh, for this, so, which is why the Direct Law Director of Direct Law is...
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Right now, uh, we, we usually do this annually. Chad does a good job of seeking funds and working with the Miami Valley Planning Organization, uh, to get funds. Right now, uh, in this particular one, um, this, this grant, probably, we're look, we're working on Mikkelsen Street, right now, this year, uh, probably carry over into next year. But the application process for this round that we're discussing now will be for that next round, since ODOT does a good job in that...
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
State of Ohio does a good job of planning ahead for everybody. We're looking at Third Street, which is another sewer that has a lot of INI, needs a lot of work, so that kind of leads up to where the, uh, you know, Mikkelsen down to, um, William Street. But, uh, um, you know, we're also trying to do some planning work around where the senior center is also. So, I know there's some roads over there that need some work and everything else, but, uh, especially with that large of an investment, and so many travelers coming in and out of that neighborhood.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Doing that in the future as well. So, uh, we're looking at Third Street right now for this, the, the next project, which would come in after Mikkelsen Street. But nothing's etched in stone, that's just what, uh, Chad kind of has on his plan right now for, uh, sewer improvement. And we choose sewer because it scores by far the highest on, uh, any of these grant applications, because of our long-term control plan, uh, but also because of the INI and, you know, with sewer flows and our finding the orders with the, uh, E... zoners with the EPA that are still out there. So I'll stop there if anybody has any questions.
We just need a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
So moved. Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Yes.
All right, item L two, discussion or action on recommendation to approve the fire department's part-time pay scale.
I'll have to turn it over to Chief on this one. If that's all right. I'll have to look at the last week's council packet to take a look at. Yeah, please.
So last week, we had talked to Safety and Human Resources Committee regarding the part-time pay scale. Over the last, as you know, like, in our organization, it's really critical that we have
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
members who are part-time to be able to keep the open shifts and be able to answer all the overlapping calls, provide all the services, and being able to be out of the engine right away. So with that being said, we've lost a lot of our part-timers due to the fact that they've transitioned into full-time. So that's not a terrible thing. It's what we try to encourage. As you seen tonight, Mr. Anderson, he, he was part-time first, went to full-time. Anna that was in the middle there, she was also part-time that went to full-time. Kyra Kepling, which is another one, he also went from part-time
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
to full-time. And so when all that happens, they're transitioning into these full-time positions, and it does, we don't, we don't have those backups that are coming in because of the recruiting efforts. It's a real struggle out there to be able to get somebody to come from really the main pool, as Lucas County, as these individuals are aware, a majority of them are bred, to have the fire and EMS training and the paramedic training, to be able to get them to come out at, you know, fourteen to sixteen bucks an hour at the five-dollar gallon gas. So looking at the general area of where we're losing majority of our individuals, that's kind of how I came up with the rates that I'm recommending here. And then also even to the local, of what we have in some of the positions that are being posted even locally in Napoleon, of the competition of what they have locally to be able to go and work. The members that you're seeing in these, these rates here, aside of the fifteen dollars an hour, everything above that requires some sort of education, at least six months of education, all the way up until when you're getting to that top of that pay scale, that means you've spent at least one year in fire school.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Fire one and Fire two certification, and then at least another year in paramedic school. So that's upwards of nine hundred-plus hours for paramedic school as well. Depending on the program, they can complete those in nine months or eighteen months, but it's a real critical factor that we have those people, even on the part-time side, to be able to step in there, to be able to fill those roles. So that's kind of how that, that was presented that evening, and we did have to support the Safety and Human Resources Committee, and I'm just looking for any questions that I can answer.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Just so everybody, this is a request to direct the law director to draft legislation.
I do have a question with how you're just explaining the different hours and things. Now, is that something that is going to be part of the, the ordinance, or is it up to you and your department to maybe make changes, or is that set in stone?
As far as, like, the hours go, or?
Their, their education.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
No, that is the state certification.
Okay.
So the state certification requires, so if you're a Fire one, that takes six months. Fire two takes another six months. EMT basic, those are all state certs that they have to take in order to get. That doesn't include, that has nothing to do with the continuing education that they have to have to, to re-up their state cert every three years.
Right. So if they just took the one, you can't just choose to say, I really like this guy, I want to put him at the twenty-five, twenty-five fifth. That's why I would make sure it's all set in stone.
No, it's set in stone based on, I don't, is it, do you have that spreadsheet up there?
Yep.
So there, if you scroll over a little bit, then you'd have to have those certifications to meet that pay.
Okay.
So as, as you can see, some of those different levels, Fire one EMT basic, Fire one advanced EMT, which is, is still ALS service, but not yet a paramedic, and advanced EMT takes another six to nine months, depending on what program you do. So what, what is I doing here, though, is that I did budget to be able to, this does not, I'm not requesting a, a budget adjustment or an increase. And as I talked to Kevin about this and then Joel, that we are just looking to keep the budget the exact same even through twenty twenty-three. These would be the established rates for twenty twenty-three as well. And if all shifts were filled, which is, part-time members can only work twenty-four hours per week max, so that, fifteen hundred hours over the course of the year. And so with that being said, if we were to fill every single shift,
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
which would be very hard to do, but if we were to fill every single shift, which means filling thirty-six hours per day for the entire year, the worst case would come up to three hundred and two thousand, which would be a little bit above that two seventy-seven where we're at. But my recommendation right now is to leave that the exact same. We can look at that if that comes to that point at the fourth quarter budget, budget in twenty twenty-three. Because I, I mean, it's just, it would, it's not super realistic that we would fill absolutely every single shift.
All right, thank you.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
How does our part-time pay scale, how does it compare to our full-time guys?
So I did that comparison as well. So the, so on the actual hourly rate, and I spent a lot of time with the, with some of our full-time members explaining this, because it's like eight dollars and thirty-two cents an hour for medical benefits. And it's another four dollars and ninety cents per hour for a pension. And then you got their hourly rates that are there. So a full-time member comes up to about, the bare minimum would be a start around twenty-nine dollars an hour.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
And so what I explained to them is that, yes, you may see this larger amount on the part-time, but they don't get offered medical insurance, they don't get offered benefits, and they only get twenty-four hours per week. So it's still a drastic difference between our full-time and our part-time. But just to take into consideration that it is, when you talk about just specific base rate, you know, comparison on starting out because of the amount of hours they do compared to the pay, it would be a little bit different there.
My fear is we do this.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Union negotiations, the union says, well, you just give all our part-time people that may or may not be union members a big raise, we expect the same.
Now, I will.
And I, I don't want to get into that boat. I'm not saying we don't need this. I just want to make sure we're very careful, especially during a, a union negotiation year, to, to not shoot ourselves in the foot, but not think ahead a little bit.
Yeah. The only thing I could say about that is that we may not be in that situation.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
We're losing a lot of the part-timers because that's kind of the same predicament. So that's just kind of where we're at. I, I'm not saying that that's, that what they will do or say, or, you know, I, I've just been open communication with them heavily on it because they know the impact of the part-time right beside them. Like, for example, today, there was only two members there, two full-time guys, and that was it. Well, actually, one full-time, one part-time, but, but because we can't fill those full-time or those part-time shifts, so. But I do understand
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
leading up into the, the negotiations. Now, I originally thought, when I was looking at all this, I originally thought that we needed to be somewhere where we offered part-time members more hours, and then if they took insurance, they took insurance. But when you look at that, and when I, before Leeny left, we had sat and kind of did those numbers, and if you had, in, in budget purposes, you would have to assume that every member that was going to be, which would be six of them, would take insurance. And if that was the case, you could be looking up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars extra per year.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
So then I started digging there, like, well, that, that to me is not, not a solution. So I started looking around to different members of the age groups of what we're really trying to recruit, and that would be between the ages of twenty to, you know, twenty-five. And majority of those members don't care about medical. They don't care because they're on their parents' medical insurance until they're twenty-six, and all they really care about is what that pay rate is, what they're going to be able to get. So, and then, you know, and I talked about it that night as well, a lot of firefighters, five dollars per gallon gas, you know, driving pickup trucks, and getting them to try to come out forty, forty minutes is, is, is a tough, you know, tough thing to do at fourteen to sixteen dollars a quarter. So, but yeah.
Any other questions? Need a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa.
I just said thanks, Chief.
Please call the roll.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
All right, item L three is discussion or action on recommendation to approve the municipal court bailiff probation officer position. Joel.
Thank you, Council President. So this was a discussion in the Safety and Human Resources Committee meeting. This is again another request for legislation to be drafted.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Bailiff slash probation officer position would be a newly created position that would serve the courts. Right now, there is a full-time bailiff and a full-time probation officer. And there's also a part-time bailiff and a part-time probation officer to help cover the shifts, to cover needs, you know, when somebody's off, or there's extra help that's needed in any of those positions. So what Judge Chuler would like is to hire a full-time position, as, combine the two part-time positions and the one full-time position, basically. Now, she does have the ability to do this unilaterally.
More or less, she has to go through council, but council would only, only be able to reject an unreasonable request pursuant to the case law that I've read. It would be, it would be, it would have to be ridiculous. And so we're not there, I don't think. And just for my part, this is a pretty good idea. I'm out there a little bit. And it's very difficult to fill those part-time positions and to keep them filled. We've run through a number of part-time probation officers and part-time bailiffs. And combining the two positions is a, is a good idea, and it's going to, it's going to free up, I guess, the bailiff and the probation officer to take sick time if they need to. Currently, currently as it stands, there's nobody out there, so if the bailiff catches COVID, we're scrambling, and maybe court doesn't happen.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
So if there's backup for both positions in one person, I think that's, that's a pretty good idea.
When the judge met with us last week, she was very clear at that. Right now, both of those part-time positions are empty.
They are.
There's nobody there. So it's similar to some of the, since the police department had talked about in the past, you know, with the dispatcher type of issue. There's just nobody there.
And you look at the history of the both positions, it's extremely high turnover.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Will she still have the capability to fill those part-time roles if this full-time is? I, I don't believe it's been drafted in the way to remove the part-time positions, has it, make sure. I'll check on that. But for now, for now, it's just creating the new position, and I'll check to see whether we drafted it in a way that it gets to where the older positions are not.
The impression I got, I don't know, Dr. Dave, you may have a different impression, but last week it, she wasn't looking at.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Right.
She wanted to combine the two positions into one position. That's the way she presented.
See, in my mind, if she's combining two positions into one, you're losing those part-time positions.
Correct. Yeah, that's.
Is that the plan?
That, that, from my understanding, that's what it was. She's combining those two part-time positions to create one full-time position.
Okay. And I just need to make sure that's the way I drafted it, too.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Are you looking for a drafting legislation for this?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Hey, Marissa, please call a roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item L four, discussion or action on update on the Brownfield Grant Application for the Cultural Center of Henry County.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Joel.
All right. Thank you, Council President. So let me get to the correct, sorry, I got a lot of things open right now. Pardon me. So the update basically is, and I'll email this to everybody, since I did draft some, just some talking points today, is that I wanted to go over a few things, how we got to where we are today, and give a recommendation to city council going forward. But, you know, the start, you know, this whole process started over six years ago with, and I've been going back to old articles from the Northwest Signal, and, you know, back in twenty sixteen, early twenty sixteen even, a lot of these discussions have been happening.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
And to the point where they reached the schools in the, at the time, the Napoleon Civic Center Foundation came to an agreement, where the Napoleon Civic Center Foundation, just as a general base, just so we have it on record here, that the property was transferred from the schools to the Napoleon Civic Center Foundation for one dollar. The foundation raised approximately five hundred fifty thousand dollars to be put into an escrow fund for the demolition of the property.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
And they were given five years to raise enough money and achieve a certificate of occupancy for the building in, in, in that timeline. The city was not, not part.
Joel, may I interrupt you for one second? Can you just, can you back up a little bit?
Yeah.
Prior to that, what was going to happen to the building?
The building was going to be demolished.
Whose decision was that?
That was the schools.
Just want to clarify that part before you start.
Yes. Yeah, it was good, because I was just going to say the city is not party to the agreement either.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Even though, I believe there was a, in this room, actually, the, there was a meeting with the
Historical Preservation.
Preservation Commission. So, and that's where a lot of this took place. So over the last five years, I believe, and this is right when I started, I think we've been rather supportive of their efforts and attempts to raise funds for the project. The city provided seating for concert events, no charge, waived permit fees, installed electric, temporary electric poles to the property, when requested. We did a lot of things that, just kind of as in-kind services to help them, help them succeed. You know, so I think there was a willingness to work with the organization at the time over the past five years, despite our not being involved in the agreement, the original agreement. But over the last five years, I mean, I think it's been apparent that they've been unable to maintain the property.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
And just over the past two years, there's been a handful of nuisance violations issued to the group. And just to make sure, now, and they've responded well, you know, they, they take care of the violations, and it's over. But there are a lot of times that I think, as everybody has seen, that there have been weeds growing up through the fence, along the back of the bleacher section, and in and about the parking lot and other areas. So, and the parking lot in the back is actually in, in disrepair as well. We're not addressing that right now, but I think that there's been, you know, enough time and, and effort, you know, given, and leeway given on our part, that there are certain times where we just have to address it. We don't, if anything, I think that we've given more leeway towards their property maintenance than we would anybody else. At a time, the Civic Center Foundation rebranded itself to the Cultural Center of Henry County.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
That was recent, within the last year and a half or so. The official name change, I don't think, has changed on the auditor's website, so I actually think technically they're still the Napoleon Civic Center Foundation as a, as a name. But since, within the last year, so within one year, the board has turned over six out of the nine members, voting members of the Board of Trustees. So
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
We've been having discussions over the last year with them. The city submitted a grant application with the CCHC board approval at the beginning of May, and then soon after that, a few weeks after that, they since voted to withdraw their desire to participate in the application. But the application's still submitted, it's still at the state level being reviewed. And, and since then, the Mommy Valley Civic Theater, which is an organization that's been around a long time, has
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
is working to try to work with the CCHC, has withdrawn their support for the CCHC project. I think that's significant, because the draw here is getting a I think that's significant, because the draw here is getting a performing arts center of some sort for this organization to perform in. And, you know, the Mommy Valley Civic Theater is that catalyst to, you know, draw those, with their history and their organization, what they've done in the past, would be able to, you know, operate a successful performing arts program. So, and since then, also, the Napoleon Area Schools has confirmed in writing that, through their attorney, and, you know, a letter was provided to everybody at some point, that the schools are not offering an extension of the agreement. And they're reviewing their options to enforce the contract. And that was written in their letter to the CCHC. So, and having discussions with the, the angel donor who donated the original $550,000 to give this project some life. It's, it's the desire of the donor to have the CCHC work with the city on this grant application in order to prevent the donor's funds from being used for the demolition of the building. And that's been stated a couple of times in different discussions with various people involved in those discussions. And knowing all of this information above that I just described, the discussion was held regarding very basic terms and conditions of a new agreement. Various parties were involved, the schools, the angel donor, the city, and the CCHC. And so the basic terms and conditions of the new agreement were also emailed to everybody and are up on the screen right now. So just going over those very briefly, the CCHC and the city, the CCHC would cooperate with the city in support of a grant application for, that's been, already been submitted in, in May. If the grant is awarded and, and, you know, the property would transfer to the city for a dollar once the grant agreement is executed. So you've gotta have a grant agreement in hand first before any transaction can take place. The CCHC wouldn't take anything out of the building that would, you know, devalue the demolition, i.e. if they take all the copper wiring out and a demolition company would use that salvage, have those salvage rights that would otherwise be used to help offset some of the costs for the demolition. So we don't want the project to be devalued by, by way of, you know, pilfering, more or less, is why that's in there. And then, they would agree to a joint press release with the city, stating those terms and conditions. And so this is where the sticking point came into play here, that, you know, upon grant award and execution of a grant agreement in the state of Ohio, we wouldn't tie them to any financial obligation of the project or the transfer. So in other words, this is transactional in nature. And that was the, the precipice of the conversation was, what are the terms and conditions? Well, this is not an agreement or a, or a partnership, it is transactional in nature. And I stated that very clearly right up front during our conversation. And the transaction wouldn't tie us to any of the other organizations or any other parties involved in this original agreement. Transactional in nature. So I made that very clear. And, and that's where, you know, this comes in. So the concern is, was, was, during the conversation, that, you know, the angel donor and CCHC didn't want any financial obligation. And as I stated, it's transactional in nature, so as it pertains to the project.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
So, not having to do with any prior business dealings or future business dealings with either parties, just transactional in nature, so clean title. And I think that was, you know, the context of that is pretty, is understood. When you're having a conversation, and when you put it in writing, you deduce it in writing so that everybody has an understanding of, you know, what it is that, you know, we all talked about, but, you know, you put a little detail into it. Now, this is just a terms and conditions sheet, this isn't the actual agreement where the actual agreement would be fourteen pages, sixteen pages long, or however long it would need to be. So just, and that, and that's where, you know, the expectation would be. So this is where it kinda got a little, there was a little confusion, because, you know, the city's not gonna be responsible for any of their liens on the property. And, but, you know, looking out for the city here, the concern is that they've had liens in the past, they've, you know, through default of the contract, they've, there was a statement made that there was a million-dollar line of credit or something of that nature that was offered to them. However, we have no information on that, that's a private transaction. I don't know if they've taken out a mortgage on the property, so any mortgages that would be out on the property or anything else that would be, where the property would be used as collateral. So those are business dealings that the taxpayers rightfully should never have to bear. Unless city council agrees to it, that's the... That, that's why that's in there. So I think this is, this language here, looked at it, and their attorney came back with some language that just couldn't agree to. I mean, it was basically wanting no financial obligations, which, I mean, that's basically an indemnification, which can't happen. So I think the context of it was misconstrued through this process. So, which is why the redlined version here, the, the expectation is that the parties were just responsible for items that are customarily the responsibility of a buyer and seller, transaction, you know, it's transactional in nature, and the city would receive title, clear title during this transaction. So, and that's been the sticking point up until this point, which, you know, in all the transactions that I've been a part of, I mean, this is pretty basic, but, I mean, and it's about as far as we can go.
It's, it's, well, with this, we'd have clear title, but it would still be restricted use, right? That, that will not change.
The deed restriction on loose field is still in place.
And it will be in place, so it's be clear title, but the restriction will still be there.
Correct.
The concern was the debt.
Right, right. I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify, they're two different things.
Promises made, a number of issues that can have and likely will pop up, given this organization's history.
Right. I just wanted to point out there were two different things. That's all.
Yeah. And then, of course, upon grant award, and this was something of the donor's expectations was, you know, and everybody else too, for that matter, is that the original real estate purchase and sale agreement, you know, could be dissolved. That's, you know, that's up to them, but, you know, coming up with, you know, the rest of these terms and conditions, you know, I believe would satisfy all the terms and conditions of the old agreement. So that was just something as a general blanket, you know, hey, that needs to be addressed as well as, you know, all of these other terms and conditions above. So, you know, the CCH, the expectation was that the CCHC board would approve this, these items, terms and conditions at their next board meeting, and that deviate from them, from the terms and conditions. So they, they did not take any action. They've had two meetings since the conversation, and this was drafted and sent out.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
And in those two meetings, no action was taken by their board. And there seems to be no urgency to that either. So, so back to the other talking points, I know I'm kinda speeding through a lot of things here, but I feel like a lot of that was rehashed, but this is kind of a new revelation here. So after this, and the delay in the vote, I took it upon myself to reach out to the State Historic Preservation Office and find out if there were any, you know, inquiries, correspondences, submittals to their office to try to put this property on the National Historic Register or the State Historic Register. Come to find out, there actually was a submittal. It was a form of a questionnaire from the State Historic Preservation Office, which is the, the start of getting something on a National Historic Register.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Unbeknownst to us altogether. So while we're talking about this and having discussions about these terms and conditions, the CCHC is taking it upon themselves to submit questionnaires and applications and inquire about the, getting this on a National Historic Register. So we didn't know about any of this until I took it upon myself to start asking the questions. So I got a lot of correspondences, it's very clear that they are really trying to speed this through and get this on the National Historic Register. But in the end, I don't know why, because after a discussion today with somebody, her name is Barb Powers at the Ohio History Connection, which is the State Historic Preservation Office, we had a great conversation, very informative, and she sent me some items to look at as well. But at the end of the day, even though they've been attempting to get it on the National Historic Register, having this building on the National Register of Historic Places has no bearing on the existing contract whatsoever. It does not preclude the building from being demolished under the terms and conditions of the original agreement. So all this does is actually prohibit, you know, or not prohibit per se, but, you know, limit the use of federal funds and some state funds from being used for the demolition of the property. Now, this takes a long time to get, you can't just say, hey, we want our building on the National Register. Doesn't work that way. It actually takes, according to Barb, it takes about a year, because there are some 60-day comment periods and 30-day comment periods and 45-day review periods and things like that. And when you combine it all together, it takes about a year for anything to actually get placed on the National Historic Register. So, you know, here's, here's the, this is just from today at 5:17 PM, you know, thanking for, thanking me for taking the time to talk about the National Register process. You know, the nomination for the old school has not been assigned to staff, but they did receive the nomination for the school today. This individual talked to Pat Bylow to explain everything as well, and I did suggest, hey, please be very clear that, of what we just talked about when, when talking to him, that this does not preclude them from being able to demolish the building using private funds. So according to her email, she did, she did say that, and the process for nomination doesn't change, and there's not really a good way to expedite the nomination process. So, you know, knowing everything that I talked about before, you know, especially with the schools confirming that they are not offering an extension, the National Historic Register doesn't do anything in terms of the original contract.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I do have that, not offhand, I think it was early June or maybe slightly before that.
While they were negotiating with us.
Yeah.
I think that's a key point.
Yeah, I didn't want that point to be lost.
Yes, yes. Very good.
That was submitted, I believe, the day of their board meeting, that we were under the impression that they would be voting to reenter into this agreement with us.
Yeah. So, so there's...
How much money did we spend on this?
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
So, so far, we're at the $5,000 mark roughly, not including staff time put into reviews and everything else. Oh, hang on, this thing gets in the way sometimes. So, so I did mention too, the, you know, the, the original donor's desires, and this came from her attorney today, that, you know, he felt that there was, there was some disappointment on his end that the CCHC is not willing to accept the revised language, which seems to be more than reasonable. I mean, that's, I mean, further showing the, the desire of the, you know, the donor and all the other parties involved, that, you know, going with this option to apply for the grant through the state is the best option concerning all parties, except for, except for CCHC, apparently. The last thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, State Representative Jim Hoops has been a really big help in all this. He's been involved, just, just behind the scenes, I mean, he's, he's supportive of everybody, but he was able to help me get a, have a conversation with the Ohio Department of Development Director, Lyddie Maholick. And, you know, it's pretty unprecedented to get to that point, having, you know, the director of development in Columbus, you know, take the time to, to talk with us about this when there's so many different projects and applications going on. So I did explain, you know, generally, it's been real high level, just to keep it simple, not, not this much time, but just, just to keep it simple, explain the circumstances of what's been going on. And I, you know, I asked, in her opinion, if the city at this time should pull the application. The reason I asked that is because I wouldn't want the city to have a bad reputation when submitting grant applications and negatively affect the city in future grant applications to any specific agency whatsoever at the state of Ohio and develop a reputation, you know, a negative reputation and, and cost the city more money down the road. So I don't wanna jeopardize our reputation for future funding. And after describing the situation, you know, she had offered, you know, some advice and, you know, thought about it and said, basically, she said, well, don't, don't, you know, don't pull the application yet if, if you're okay with it. And, you know, she can assign some staff to kinda take a look at what's going on and see if there is, you know, any way that, that her staff and their experience in working with projects like this could look into this project and try to meet with all parties involved as a service to us and the community. So I'll just say, end it with, at the beginning of today, my recommendation was going to be to pull the application. It really was. But as of, you know, 3:30 this afternoon, talking with the director, I believe that it's worthwhile to at least hold off until, you know, we give this one last chance and see if anybody from the ODOT can help us find a, find a solution that works best for everyone. So, now, that said, you know, I have to follow that, it's just a recommendation. So if this is something that is alarming or appalling and you don't wanna be part of it anymore, you know, we can always yank the application now, but I wanted to state those few things, because I think, one, number one, I think the public deserves to know these things. I think some of it is a little bit of alarming, that, you know, we're trying to work in good faith with different parties, and I don't believe, and I, and I stand behind this, that the CCHC is not reciprocating. Number two, I think it's, it's a, it's a pretty big decision at this point.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I mean, it really has a drastic effect on the future of this community, what happens with this grant application and decisions that are being made, whether it's at the school board level, city council level, the, the CCHC board level. And these are all decisions that, you know, will, will affect this community for a very long time. So I'm optimistic and hopeful that the, all the parties and, you know, can come together and come to the reasonable solution.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
My recommendation is to hold off on pulling it, but only if, according to their attorney, the CCHC is meeting Tuesday, July 12th, and they expect to vote on this proposal at that time. So the proposal being, I don't think we deviate anymore off of this proposal that's been given. Just don't think there's any room to go any further, really, if you think about it. The financial obligations that the CCHC has at this time will be theirs and will always be theirs, whether or not they vote to approve of this. So that's not something that the taxpayers should, should bear the burden of. You know, there are a lot of benefits too, I mean, they're, you know, they wouldn't be, potentially wouldn't be subject to additional property maintenance costs, being that if they drag this out further than, you know, the property maintenance expenses and time put into it. You know, we did agree to, and again, this is all subject to city council approval, pay for their portion of closing costs, which is, I think, a nominal expense. And then, you know, the angel donor gets... And then, you know, the angel donor gets money back that could be otherwise used potentially for other items somewhere else in the, in the community. So, but I think that covers it.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I don't know if, yeah, that covers everything from my end. Just want to make sure everybody had an update and take any feedback, comments?
So, I guess what I'm thinking is if you hear back from, I didn't write down the lady's name you spoke to today, the director of the, of the economic development.
Lydia, yep.
So, if her recommendation comes back in the next couple of days, saying to withdraw it. And the CCHC has their meeting and they don't, they don't vote on this in favor of the agreement put forth. Do we need to vote now to let, to give you the power to be able to pull that? Or do we not need to do anything at all?
No, and Billy, correct me if I'm wrong, I could pull the application tomorrow. I just think it's, you know, too big of a decision to not have everybody be informed.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Like I said, if it wasn't for that one last conversation, my recommendation would have been to pull it. But I think that, I think we're here right now for a reason discussing this. And, I mean, at least there's one last chance. I think what's best for the community, in my opinion, is that they move forward, cooperate with us, agree to the terms and conditions as outlined in this, in this terms and conditions sheet. And then, you know, we can all move on.
The other thing I want to say, I just want to thank you for your patience. And you're, I don't know, putting aside some, probably some emotions because your name has been drug through the mud by some people throughout this process. And you've had the power to be able to withdraw that several times. But I know what your thoughts are is what's best for the city, what's best for this community. So, I appreciate your patience and professionalism.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Any questions, comments?
I'll second. If we, if we wait until the 12th, and I think there's no reason for us to pull it before the 12th when that, when the CCHC board meets again. Hopefully, they follow their attorney's advice and vote on the proposal as it's currently written. I don't think we make any changes. I think that's, in my mind, that's going to be their last opportunity to, to jump on board with us. I think if they don't take action or they vote it down or they ask for anything else to change, I think at that point, I think we got to say thank you very much to Representative Hoops for all the work that he's done behind the scenes. And then we got to say thank you to the Ohio, the people at the state of Ohio for all the work that they've done for us. I think that's when we can make our decision. I think, I think Billy pointed something out that I think was, was right on. And I know Ross caught it too, that they entered into, you know, the historic preservation stuff while they were, you know, talking with us about how, you know, move forward here. That's tough to hear at the same time. You know, it's a, it's a dedicated group that want to, you know, they're doing everything they can to save their building. But I think at the same time, I think we got to, we got to make, we're doing our best for the, for the citizens. And if, if, if they won't agree to it next week, great. If not, I think it'd be then, in my opinion, at that time, it'd be time to pull the application and say thank you very much. And I think, I want to use Kevin's words, and sometimes insurance has to pay.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I think you said something along those lines in the past, something along those lines. So, and we don't want to, you know, use the angel donors like that. That's not, but at the same time, we spent over $5,000 plus, plus hours, plus heartache. And I know that, I know that the CCH board has too, right? You know, they're trying to do again, everything they can to save the building. And I just think where, where we're at right now, it's, in my opinion, next, next Tuesday is their last opportunity. That's my opinion on it.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Joel, I have a question on the original agreement. Do you know the timeframe of the next step for the school and the CCHC's?
Go ahead, go ahead. 30 days, 30 days from June 28th. June 28th was the date that this agreement was actually recorded on the deed. And they have 30 days to file an application with the Preservation Commission to start the demolition process. So, July 28th, they have to file.
I think that's important to note. I can't remember who said it first, but I believe the taxpayers have voted with their wallets to not support their mission and their project. It is incomprehensible.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
At this point, for them not to enter into this agreement with us, I don't understand what the hesitancy is or has been for the last 12 to 14 months since we've engaged in conversations with them. But I would urge their group to make a decision for what's best for every citizen of Napoleon, not just the nine board members.
I think their hesitancy is, is they see the John L. Johnson coming down and that's what they're trying to prevent. Besides that, I agree with what you're saying, Councilman Durham.
They're playing with other people's money, though.
100%.
It is difficult to understand. I mean, I do understand that they, they want to keep the building up. But at this point, your, your project is a failure and you're done. And you need, you need to move on. And let's find a way to work together to move forward.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
That's what we've been begging for since these conversations have started, so.
Yeah, I think that's why the Mommy Valley Civic Theater is out. So, I think they've moved on from this project, saw the writing on the wall, and are still pursuing a different project altogether. A vote or in, a vote not to enter into this agreement with the city on their part or inaction on their part is a vote to, according to the schools and everything else that's going on, is a vote to voluntarily use donor money instead of state grant money to tear the building down. Simply put.
In my mind, inaction or tabling it or not doing is the same as withdrawing from their, their side, right?
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
That's right. You know, the original goal of the organization, as you outlined, was wonderful. I, you know, I have nothing against performing arts. I thought that was a good idea. But as, you know, Councilman Durham has already indicated indirectly, you know, they had opportunities even prior to COVID to start raising money for this project. And for whatever reason, it did not happen. And each of us as individuals have things that we want to do that sometimes just don't happen. And I also understand what the mayor is saying, that, yeah, you know, they want to, they wanted to do everything they can to save that John L. Johnson. But at this point, it does not, does not seem to be realistic. And the fact that they have been, in my mind, deceptive in their actions toward the school board and the city is really frustrating to me.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I've been behind their project for a long time, but this kind of deception just really is frustrating.
Thank you for the update. There was a lot of work behind the scenes, so, again, thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions?
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
All right, we will move on. Thank you, Joel, appreciate that. Moving on to item L, L6. Discussion or Action: Accept Donations of $1,000 from Local Eagles, Mayor 4428 to the Police Department for Summer Outreach Programs.
You have to write them off, skip one.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll do this one first.
Yeah, good.
The donation, I mean, after that conversation?
That's right, good, absolutely.
Wirecast.
Good point. That's why you pay the big bucks.
This is an easy one. The Eagles saw, and Chief Mack is on also, and Lieutenant Greg Smith is here too. I don't know if you have anything to add to this. But they saw the Cops and Bobbers event and the success of that and wanted to participate in other summer youth programs. So, that was, you know, a kind and generous donation. Just, you know, success breeds success. I know we, we hear that term a lot and I think this is the epitome of that.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
You have a successful event and, you know, people want to jump on board. And if you've got a way to donate money to it, they, you know, they want to get involved. So, it was a great event. That's, that's, am I missing anything? I don't know if I...
Well, a week after the Cops and Bobbers, with the second year they did the kickball tournament, which was again, another huge success.
So, it's been panning out and, you know, people just want to be a part of that and contribute.
Great.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Motion to accept this donation.
Motion, second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Ken?
Yes.
Sorry.
Kevin can't vote.
That's yours for the day.
I would vote yes also.
Sorry, Ken, I didn't hear you.
She can't hear you. Yes.
Dr. Name?
Yes.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Now, we'll go back to L5. Discussion or Action: Accept Donations of a Youth School Bus From the Napoleon Schools to the City of Napoleon Safety Services to Use for Training. Chief, do you want to?
The school system gave us a school bus out at the training facility. It'll be to, not to burn, but to actually, we'll be going through it and just doing some different evolutions with the training for the school bus. Hopefully, get some of the teachers and, or the bus, not teachers, the bus drivers out there to be able to show them some of the different techniques that they were getting to. You know, maybe how to get out of that school bus. So, just another unique thing that we got out there for time being.
I think this is awesome. And even going a little bit deeper in this, when I get on Council beck in 2016, the relationship between the city and the schools were not, were not great. And this just goes to show the hard work of everyone at the city and everyone at the school working together. I don't see this happening six or seven years ago.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
So, thank you for, for the schools and everything the staff here does.
I'm assuming there's basically zero maintenance costs on that bus as it sits in our training area, correct?
Correct, there's no, yeah, no. It's going to sit back there with the other, the cars that we burned in that area, yeah, nothing for us.
All right, is there a motion to accept?
So, move.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Name?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that's been accepted. Item L7, Discussion or Action: Accept Donation of $200 to Parks and Rec Department For Family Memberships to Napoleon Aquatic Center. It's pretty straightforward. And I, I'd never got a reason why they...
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Just request to accept.
Is it anonymous or...
You know, and I don't have, it wasn't in the packet, so I actually didn't see a copy of the check unless, Kevin, you've got it?
I, I've not seen a copy of the check.
So, it came from Tony, so I'm trying to find it here, excuse me. It wasn't in the packet, so Tony's on vacation. This is his busy time of year and he just ended it with the fireworks.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
He's overdue for vacation. He usually takes this week off.
We would be very curious if we, you know, we can, we'd like to thank the donor.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Unless they want to be anonymous, yeah.
Yeah, unless, yeah, absolutely, right, yeah. Obviously, if they want to be anonymous, we'd like to, you know, to, to give credit where credit is due. So, if we find out, it'd be great to put in the, the front FYI or next council meeting or something.
Friday FYI or next council meeting, yep.
Whatever, whatever works.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Name?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right, we'll go around the table. Sorry, Kevin.
I have nothing.
Molly's?
I just want to note that the fireworks were a nice, nice show. Everybody came out, enjoyed them, so. And thanks to the city, all the city workers who put in the extra time. I saw lots of involvement.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
The fire truck honked at my kids. City workers keeping the parks clean, it was great, so, thank you.
Ross?
How like, oh, Molly, thank you to all involved, great show, great weekend altogether, from the triathlon to the hole-in-one contest to all the baseball events, the Parks and Rec fireworks show. And lastly, just want to welcome Marissa, glad to have you here, so, thank you.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I'd say same. I mean, I was, I was in the parks a lot this weekend and just saw how awesome our community looked and how many city employees were working when we were all enjoying a nice weekend off. Believe me, I, I thought about them and, you know, appreciate their hard work and...
Welcome, Marissa. Mr. Mayor?
I think we all talked about it already, all the great stuff that Parks and Rec did, everybody did. Also, want to make sure we thank the Napoleon Legion that gave us the flagpole. So, that, that was kind of nice. We were able to put that up, their flag up on Friday, which I thought was, was really, really nice. Since Sedward got extended out, the traffic on Sedward has picked up and in particular, the speed on Sedward has picked up. Is there a way we can make the Sedward-Becca Lane intersection be a three-way stop, not a four-way stop? Can we look at that?
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Residents out there are talking to me about just the speed of more vehicles going out that way out of Riviera Heights in that area, so, if we just take a look.
Yep.
That is all I had, thank you very much.
Dan?
I'm just agreeing, the fireworks show is good as always. Every cent for the weekend was, was positive. The other cent, I don't know, this might have been mentioned last time when I was not here, but...
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Speaking of that, Cops and Bobbers, great PR all the way around, including television PR on it. So, very great PR on that, on that program. That's all.
Kevin?
You got set up, though.
Just echoing what everybody else said, good show. I went around through the boat ramps this morning. Everything was all cleaned up down there.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Everything was looking good.
Dr. Name?
A lot of the same things you guys have said. It was a good show. I noticed the city workers have done a good job keeping everything clean. I think the citizens have done a better job keeping things clean. It seemed like they were picking up a little bit more after themselves and, and it shows too, when everybody chips in. Also, I, well, I do have one thing to mention on Washington and Perry, right in the corner by PNC Bank, one of the lights, the red light is totally out. They've got two lights there, one, I also gave that message to one of the electrician trucks that were going around, so the word should have gotten there, but I just thought I'd mention that. So, the green works, but the red doesn't on the one.
That can be a problem.
Yeah, well, the other one still works. That's all I got.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Joel? Couple of things. So, we've been tracking the infrastructure funds from the federal level pretty regularly, weekly. And a lot of what, and I, and I talked with Chad about this on a, you know, time-to-time basis. And what we're finding is that outside of the programs that we already apply to, there really isn't... there really isn't a lot for us to apply for.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
It's hard to capture this, but, you know, a lot of it just seems to be geared towards larger cities or larger populations. And I say that because, you know, like mass transit, or, you know, there's funding out there for that, or railroad crossing elimination, things like that, things that would be, you know, bigger ticket items or bigger city items, so. We are still tracking it, we're trying to find programs that would work for us and
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
things that would benefit the city, but it's not as easy as what it sounds like. That said, the changing topics, we do actually have, Kevin and Chief Mack and I went through the interview process, we do have a verbal offer to an HR, new HR Director, that was accepted for the position, don't want to give names yet, we still have to go through the background check process and do a couple other checks
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
and allow for this person to, you know, contact their employer and let them know, give them notice, so we are going through that process right now, but we do have an accepted offer. Hopefully, if everything works out well, we can get somebody in by the end of this month. So, went very well, we had six interviews, six candidates that interviewed very well, very strong candidates, and we just, we had one that was just kind of, I mean, was far and above everybody else of that candidate pool, so it was really good.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
That's all I have, thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item N, approved payment of bills, in the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills shall stand approved. Here are none, they stand approved. Item O, adjournment, we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Yes.
We are adjourned.